Where did you get that?
I said hi to you. I said hello, Alice.
I see Jody Carson, I'm just wondering if we all have-
Do I want to call a meeting to order?
Yeah.
I think so.
No, I don't have this one and I don't have this one.
All right.
Do you?
This one, I believe you had in your packet.
So I'm calling the meeting to order, I'm Amy Cleary and I'm here to facilitate this joint work session this evening. So my understanding is that we are all here to listen to a couple of presentations, and they're from cable access organizations. One is from Washington County and the other is the Willamette Falls Cable Access Company, and they're both here this evening, is that right? Okay. So are those people ready to make their presentations?
Yeah, I think the agenda has the Metropolitan Area Communications Commission going first, and then following them would be Willamette Falls Media Center.
Okay, and do either one of the mayors want to make comments before we get started?
I don't.
Okay, do you?
Yeah, I'll make some comments.
Okay, go ahead.
First, perhaps we should all introduce ourselves. Can we just go around the table? And I'm John Kovach, I'm the mayor of West Lynn, and Dave, did you introduce yourself? Would you like to do that again?
I can.
Okay, please.
I'm Amy Cleary, I'm here to facilitate the meeting this evening, and I work with Clackamas County with Resolution Services, and typically we provide community mediation services and facilitation for neighbors of Clackamas County.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Doug Neil, Mayor of Oregon City.
Jody Carson, West Lynn City Council.
Kathy Roth, Oregon City Council.
Terry Cummings, West Lynn City Council.
David Fraser, Oregon City City Manager.
Chris Jordan, City Manager of West Lynn.
Mike Jones, West Lynn City Council.
I'm Betty Mapp, City Commissioner.
Thank you.
Get one more mic.
What?
I can hear you. You can move that mic down if everybody's got a mic.
Everybody's got it.
That'd be great. Thanks, got it. Have your own now, Joe.
You want to request, Amy?
It's all you.
It's okay, I can let somebody else handle the technical aspects.
There you go, thanks.
The issue tonight is Willamette Falls Television, which is owned jointly by West Lynn, City of West Lynn, and Oregon City, and we both contribute to the maintenance, the operations of this facility, which is extremely important to the communities, providing community access television, and there have been some issues with the management of the facility, and if we wanted to continue with the financing, and if so at what level, and we've had some meetings with, between the two cities, and we are exploring other options for public access television, and that's why we are here this evening, to hear alternate presentations for these types of services to be provided to our cities. So that's where we are tonight, and I'll turn that over back over to the facilitator, and we can go forward with the presentations.
Okay, thank you very much, John. So my role tonight will be to basically be a moderator, I'm going to be asking people to make their presentations, and then after that, there'll be a discussion between the two city councils and the cities around these issues, and there will be no decision-making tonight since this is a work session, but the information will be gathered in order for both cities and councils to make decisions later on. So the people who are prepared to make presentations tonight, would you come approach the table? Thank you. And I'll let you introduce yourself, that would be great.
Mayor Kovach and Mayor Neely, commissioners and councilors. My name is Bruce Crest, I'm the administrator of the Metropolitan Area Communications Commission. Our offices are located in Beaverton. It's a pleasure to be here tonight to talk to you about MAC and the kinds of services that MAC performs for its member jurisdictions. MAC was founded 31 years ago, and I've had the pleasure of serving as its administrator for the last 25 years. With me tonight is Fred Crest, who's our Policy and Regulatory Affairs Manager, and he may help me if you have questions that I can't answer. Several months ago, we were contacted by staff members from both of your cities, and they wanted to learn more about MAC and the services that MAC provides, not just the public education and government access services, but the other regulatory and communication services that our office provides its members. Recently, we also met with Mayor Kovach, and were later invited to attend this work session tonight, and I thank you for doing that, and this gives us an opportunity to answer questions you have and talk about our services. We provided you some written information and some statistical data from the last year that might be helpful to you, and since I don't like to kind of go over the kinds of things I've already sent you in writing, I think I'd like to cut my comments short and give you plenty of time to ask questions of me. So without any further ado, I'm here to answer questions related to material I sent you or anything else germane to this topic.
Okay, would you like to go ahead and do that, Doug?
The services we're currently provided, of course, are located within Oregon City. There are residents and other entities that utilize this facility, so it's very convenient to them. Where would you have comparable facilities where the public could gain access?
Well, we're building a new facility in West Beaverton. Our jurisdiction, of course, includes almost all the cities in Washington County, the county itself, Toowallatin, which is near here, Lake Oswego, and River Grove, which are also cities near your communities. So we have people who come from Lake Oswego, Toowallatin, all over the place, all the way out to Gaston, Banks, who come to our facility. Our current facility is actually more located in our central Beaverton, but we're moving to a new location in West Beaverton, which is right near the Sunset Highway. So that's the service area that we work, and we have people from all of our jurisdictions who use our facility.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, go ahead, Terry.
Have you ever, have you ever considered, since you do serve Lake Oswego and some areas around here, and now that we're entertaining this idea, perhaps, have you had any discussions yet about an annex or anything like that?
You mean as far as a separate facility out here?
It's a long ways.
Sure, sure. You know, we're here in response to your staffs wanting us to come and talk about this, and we haven't really worked out details about what would happen. We have an adequate facility right now for the services we provide, and it's going to be a state-of-the-art facility. Whether we could arrange something in this area, that's something we certainly could discuss. The commission is really trying to centralize its location and reduce its cost, and that's another reason why we're doing that.
How does it work for the people of Milwaukee? Do they, do they ever do any recording or use of your studio?
Milwaukee, right now, is only an IGA member of MAC, they are not a full member, and the only thing that we do for the city of Milwaukee at the current time is regulate and administer their cable franchise, that's our primary job. Milwaukee, though, is considering joining MAC, and I believe right now Milwaukee residents come to the Willamette Falls Center, if I'm correct. I'm not sure what the plan is after that, I'm assuming if Milwaukee joins MAC, they're going to be interested in having their people come to our facility. And they haven't talked, we haven't had any formal discussions with the city council yet, but we've been working with their staff, and we understand they're going to be asking to join MAC fairly soon. And our commission, by the way, has already given us consent to talk to other members and to see if other people want to join, and that's another process that we're involved with several cities.
Okay.
We broadcast our city council meetings, a work session like we are being broadcast, hopefully, tonight, and we have planning commissions, et cetera. Could you talk to us about how that type of programming is conducted by MAC?
Sure. We have seven jurisdictions who have government programming like yours, who have council chambers that have been wired and set up with automated equipment. We actually provide that automated equipment through a grant program that we administer at MAC, and since we have those monies available, we provide all the gear, all the equipment, we maintain it, and all the cities really do, and the counties provide us a booth, probably it's not too similar from yours where that equipment is housed. We also provide staff, one or two staff people, depending on the type of equipment in the facility, to come out and are paid by our office to come out and tape those meetings. So depending on the length of the council meeting, an hour meeting or two or three-hour meeting, we have staff people who are what we call on-call staff, so these are part-time people who we bring in, who are on our paid, part-time staff, and they come in and actually produce the meetings, and that's all provided as part of the cost that the jurisdictions pay us to operate.
So if we were to say, just off the top of my head, like on Saturday, we had an event on Main Street, and I know Willamette Falls access people was there, Melanie was there taping, would that be something that you would do also?
We have, besides covering council meetings, we also have a professional staff who produces a number of meetings for each of the jurisdictions. We also produce a lot of meetings that we get requests for on our own and make decisions about those all the time. We produced about 400 meetings, 400 events last year, about 200 of those were meetings, the rest of them were community events all over our service area. Your situation in, with your two cities is going to be a little different than our jurisdictions initially, because you're still under your current franchise, and so we'd have to sort out how we would do all of that for you, but the intent would be that you would have some ability to get some community meetings produced, as well as your council, regular council meetings would be produced, and those would be done by our professional staff. Sometimes we also involve community access producers who are interested in working as volunteers, and some of those people come out and crew along with our professional staff.
So to do that on a regular basis, because I know they show up quite frequently at different events in Oregon City, I don't know about West Lynn, but in Oregon City they show up, and there's not an extra charge for us, would you incorporate an extra charge?
Again, we're going to have to work out the interim process between now and the time that the franchises, the franchises are renewed for all of our jurisdictions in 2014. Currently, our jurisdictions receive a number of free meeting or event coverages every year as part of their package.
Okay, so that's kind of what I was-
And right now, that's set up through our IGA with an identified number, and we call them deliverables, and then there's meetings on top of that for regular meetings, and jurisdictions can choose for themselves what other events they want covered besides just the straight meeting coverage of the regular meetings. The problem we have, a little bit of a problem we have now is, and again, until we have more discussions with your staff about how to do all of that, we, it's kind of hard for us to break you into that system, because it's a number of meetings that are allocated for all jurisdictions by the percentage of the number of subscribers that they have under our franchise.
Right.
And your franchises aren't part of that yet.
But if you were to take somebody from your, that's under your jurisdiction right now, let's say Milwaukee or whatever, do you provide all of the services for Milwaukee right now, or does?
No.
No. So there's two different-
I'm sorry, yeah. Milwaukee, again, is not a full member of MAC.
Okay.
They are under contract with us to do cable franchise administration only.
Right.
We do not do anything with their access program, with their institutional network, or anything else that goes on in the city. If they were to join MAC, they would, in a sense, be in the same boat you're in, because they have a separate franchise right now that's going to be renewed with the MAC franchise in 2014. With our other jurisdictions, as an example, the city of, Lake Oswego, I think, has seven or eight events that we call deliverables, on top of their meetings, on top of covering their regular council meetings, we do all of their regular council meetings, and then they have seven or eight events, I don't know the exact number that they have, that's based on their proportion and size in relationship to everybody else. Washington County, which is our largest jurisdiction, has 26 event coverages, because they're the largest, they are 23 percent of our subscribers.
Okay, thank you.
It's kind of a follow-up that she made about the event that was covered in Oregon City on Saturday. It wasn't actually a city event, although the city supported it, it was actually an independent event, and if, I mean, if we were having an agreement with you, it may not be an event that the city would subscribe to, because it's not our event. I mean, do you, do those kinds of events gratis?
We also have, yes, well, we do some gratis, and some of the jurisdictions pay us to do additional events, or cut PSAs for them and different kinds of things that we do. We also have a community production arm of our operation, which is more of a freelance production group, who go, it's a new feature we're putting into the program now, and they basically have a producer and a couple of part-time, or actually full-time, production assistants who can go out with them along with community producers, and we hope to do a lot more community events than we've done prior to this. Up till now, it's been the allocated number of deliverables to each of the jurisdictions and their regular council meetings. Part of the new program we're doing is expanding that, because we just know, like in our jurisdictions, there's all kinds of other events that aren't necessarily connected to the jurisdictions, and we want to be able to try to respond to those and spread that around, and we would certainly consider doing the same thing for your cities as well.
That's person Carson.
Yeah, I just have two questions that may be somewhat related to that, but the first one is more just information. You mentioned in your documentation that you have fines imposed by MAC on cable operators, and can you explain what those fines are about? And then I have a follow-up question.
Almost all of those fines were related to failure to answer their telephones within a prescribed time as defined by our franchise. We have a number of customer service standards in our franchise that we have now with Comcast and Frontier, and basically they're required to answer their telephones based on a federal law standard that's in our franchise. And for a number of years, from '97 to about 2003, first TCI, then AT&amp;T, both failed to make the telephone answering standard. When Comcast bought the system in 2003, they put some more efforts into customer service, and we haven't had those issues. But those fines were all fines collected according to the rules of the franchise, and then those funds were distributed out to our jurisdictions, because we don't have any mechanism to get them back to subscribers, unfortunately.
Okay, great. And then the other question I had was, can you describe the relationship between the MACC and TVCTV?
Twallan Valley Community Television is really a division of MAC, it's part of our organization. It's been that way for about five years, for the 10 years prior to that, it was part of a nonprofit corporation that we had a contract with to do public education and government access for us. The commission became very unhappy with the quality and level of service that they were receiving from our contractor, and decided in 2005 to take it back. So since that time, it's been a division of MAC, and it basically, I have a couple of managers who manage portions of that, along with managers like Fred and others who manage other parts of our program. So it actually is part of what we do. It'd be like, if we were a city, it would be like a city department.
Okay, so Mr. Jordan, and then Counselor Roth after that, and I think we've got four more minutes for this presentation and questions?
Bruce, you mentioned earlier cable franchise administration. Both of our cities have expired franchise agreements right now. When you mentioned cable franchise administration, what does that entail in terms of negotiating, administering, maintaining? You mentioned fines, things like that, could you give a real brief description of what that kind of means?
Sure. We basically run a full-turn key operation in the-
No, you're good. Just hold on a minute.
I'm sorry. Our office has a full-turn key operation for all of our jurisdictions and managing, administering their, the cable franchise that we all jointly share, okay? In your case, we would obviously be administering your current, expired MAC franchise in 2014, Comcast, we would be adding you to that group, and you would be part of that large joint franchise with all the other 14 jurisdictions. The work involved, besides the day-to-day kinds of administering and reviewing franchises, a lot of reporting, telephone answering, statistical work that we do, we collect franchise fees from the cable company, distribute them to jurisdictions, we audit franchise fee payments, we just finished an audit of Comcast, and they paid us an additional $86,000 in franchise fees that we do for the last two years that they underpaid us on. You'll note in the report, there's several hundred thousand dollars of additional franchise fees that we do. We do audits every two years of our franchises, we're just going to start a franchise fee review, we just finished a franchise fee review for Verizon, which was the former owner of Frontier. So we do that on a regular basis. We handle citizen complaints, deal with billing issues that citizens have, people call us, not on a first-call basis, we require everybody to talk to the cable company first, but we're talking to people who are very, very frustrated with their cable service. They have billing issues, customer service issues, installation issues and service issues, that they are just reached the end of the road with Comcast or Frontier, and they call us and we intercede, and we act like an ombudsman to work with the cable company, and in some cases, we have to write letters and put a lot of pressure on the cable company to get action. In most cases, they're pretty responsive to our staff when they call. From a renewal point of view, we're in the process right now, there's a three-year renewal window prior to expiration of every franchise product under the law. We are in the beginning of that renewal period. We're working right now on developing our plans for hiring consultants to do a community needs assessment. Federal law basically requires a community needs assessment that basically identifies the needs of the community, everything, make access to responsiveness of the cable company, to technology changes. In our case, we have a large institutional network called the Public Communications Network that serves 230 sites, and want to make sure those people are included. We go up and basically hire professional people to survey all kinds of folks and gather information, and that is part of our negotiation with Comcast. And then we sit down and actually do the negotiations. Then we actually sit down and do the actual negotiations with Comcast, which would take as long as a year or more.
Okay, and I think Counselor Roth would like to get one quick question and one quick response.
Thanks. It's kind of two parts here. Where would Oregon City/West Lynn fit in on your pie chart of percentages as far as event coverage?
Well, you wouldn't fit in under the current chart, because we don't want to try to fit you into that, because that would be a problem for other jurisdictions. We would have to talk, we would have to talk to you about some use of the portion of franchise fees that we would request you pay us for the access portion of the operation. We had to figure out some way of apportioning that out to give you a number of programs, community event programs, deliverables along with the meetings that we recover for both of the cities. So that's something we still have to have a discussion on. As far as our regular community event coverage, our own kind of do what we want to do, we want to cover various events, that's certainly something we'd do in both of the cities. Milwaukee, we would add Milwaukee to it, if all of our jurisdictions benefit from that. But as far as that deliverable package, it's a set package that's based on the current franchise, and we haven't figured out a way to break that yet without, we'd have to take deliverables away from other jurisdictions for MAC members, we might not make them very happy, because that might not help you're joining the organization. So what we want to do is set up something separate for your two jurisdictions, as well as Milwaukee, that will allow your needs to be covered, a certain amount of deliverables that you would be able to request to be done as a city, and then we would obviously produce other community events, we have resources to do that, and try to spread that all throughout all of our jurisdictions.
Okay, and then are you in talks with any other Easterly cities that could influence you bringing a center out this way further?
Other than Milwaukee, I'm trying to think of Easterly, it's Milwaukee. Milwaukee, actually, I think is very close to sending us the letter to join. We've had, they've been working with us for 10 years on the contract. We have a request from Happy Valley to come out with their needs, and they have a, they work with Willamette Falls, and it's the only other jurisdiction that we have on the agenda, and they would actually fight us, but they're not no different than you folks.
Thank you. Great, thank you for the opportunity for the questions, and we're going to welcome the next presenter up.
Is that better, Alice?
And I'll let you introduce yourself.
My name is Dan Holliday, I'm Assistant of Oregon City and the Chair of Clackamas Cable Access Board, which oversees Willamette Falls Media Center. I want to thank you for the opportunity to talk to you folks tonight. Is our, is our PowerPoint ready, or?
We can't put it in our system, because our IT department needs to clear everything before it goes in, and our IT department isn't here, so we can't, we can't put it in the system right now, I'm afraid.
Can you play VVD?
Yeah.
Do we still have the-
The video, yes, that was sent to us earlier today, and our IT department made sure that that was clean.
Okay. Well, that's it. So I guess maybe rather than go through the PowerPoint, without the PowerPoint. Oh, okay. Yes, we do have the PowerPoint. Oh, that's the DVD, okay. I would just give some basic background on Willamette Falls Media Center, we've been around since the early 80s, was really a community-built organization, started by, basically by some folks here in West Lynn. In the last, I think it was in 2009, the City Council of West Lynn and the City Commission of Oregon City approved our move from the old station down on Main Street in Oregon City to the new facility at the old arts building at the Jackson Campus of Oregon City High School. Since then, we have rebuilt that facility into what would be a state, is a state-of-the-art production facility with three studios, one of which is a kitchen studio, to allow for different kinds of productions. We are not the same kind of organization as MAC, in that we only provide the community access and PEG part of the cable system. We are the current hub for Comcast in this area, so we provide all of the digital signals from Comcast, come into Willamette Falls TV, and then are brought, are distributed out to Comcast to their services. So I'm not sure if MAC currently has a hub that could service our folks in this area, and that's, I guess that's a question that you might want to ask later on. We have, we do a number of, let's see, let me flip through this, because this really did kind of throw me off. I want to go to my service areas here. So in West Lynn, we provide 24 council meetings a year, or a month, we provide, oh no, that's a year, 24 work sessions a year, 24 planning commission sessions, 12 sessions of the Sustainable Advisory Board, 12 of the Library Board, that's a total of 96 meetings. At $400 a meeting, that's about $38,000 of service that we provide to the city of West Lynn. City of Oregon City gets 24 commission meetings, 24 commission work sessions, planning commissions, 24 historic view board, 12, that's 84 meetings at about $33,000. In addition, we do 12 of the Library Board, 12 of the Parks and Rec Board, 12 Transportation Advisory Board, 12 of the Citizen Involvement Committee, 48 meetings additional to that at about $19,000. We work with both the city of Oregon City's School District and the city of, or the West Lynn-Wilsonville School District, and provide a number of services, including the Channel District Head End, and support the district office on technical assistance, assistant communication, seeking PEG funding for the district casting internships, tours, and education for student support, and school sports cable cast on the public channel, and we do those for both districts. Let's see. So to get to the meat of where the board is talking about going is, we are having discussions about moving towards, and this year, moving into a nonprofit model, where we would still maintain the same kinds of services that we provide now, but we would form a nonprofit organization, the assets of Willamette Falls Media Center would then be transferred into this nonprofit, and we would turn the city of West Lynn and the city of Oregon City into a contract, a fee-for-service contract sort of entity, and then negotiating longer-term contracts with our current customer cities, and we're currently in discussions with other cities in Clackamas County to provide some of these community services, CAMBE being one that we are talking to right now. We provide five core areas of communications, that's our channel emphasis- We provide five core areas of communications. That's our channel and facility management. So, that's the six cable channels that we provide, both government and what we call local. So, Oregon City has a government channel, West Lynn has a government channel, and Melody, if we needed to go through all the absolute details, because I don't keep track of all those, I've only been the Chair of the Board for six months or so. We provide programming, community outreach, public service, and government service. The community outreach category encompasses not only productions for nonprofit organizations, but programs developed for the community in the areas of digital media, i.e., we're doing a program called Your Community News where we are scheduling a half an hour once a month to bring in organizations, Chamber of Commerce, local businesses, all different kinds of events, and they get a couple of minutes to talk about whatever their event might be, and we run that all month long. We're also in the process of producing a new children's show, The Big Red Barn, and it's going to be for those of us in my, in our age group, Doug, fashioned after Ramblin' Rod, where we, you know, some-
We're not in the same age group.
I was trying to flatter you a little bit.
My mind is red dunning, actually.
Rusty nails.
Okay. So, to close, I just want to play this little short clip. Let's see if I can actually do this, being the technical guy that I am. Can we get that to go?
I'm Mike Waters, and I just wanted to tell you a little bit about the Willamette Falls Media Center and how important it is. I've worked with them, with the McLean House, doing historical reviews, with the West Lynn Lions, doing safe voting for kids. They've publicized many, many activities throughout the Bolton area, but around West Lynn. It's a resource that we really should have and continue to have. Thanks.
Hi. My name is Suze, and I work for the Oregon City School District in the Community Ed Department. For over the past year, I have had the pleasure partnering with Willamette Falls Media Center to produce public service announcements and create new community programs. I look forward to continuing to use this valuable resource to reach out to our community.
I'm Sandy Carter, and I couldn't have produced two full-length documentaries on West Lynn's mill town history without the incredible resources that West Lynn's community editing suite. As a tiny nonprofit, Willamette Falls Heritage Foundation has been able to get the word out about six lockfests and our other West Lynn projects and build community support for heritage. Our station is a great community asset.
My name is Paul Brockman. I'm a member of Trinity Lutheran Church here in Oregon City. We videotape, record our services every Sunday, and for many, many years, we've been making deliveries of those tapes to the TV station here. We have a lot of people who can't come to church who get to see our program, and we think it's a pretty good thing. We support this station very much. We appreciate its support for us in the community. Thank you.
As a cable customer, each month I pay to ensure that venues like WFTV remain in place. It would be very disconcerting to me, and I think very disconcerting, to other cable customers who value the service to our democracy that WFTV provides, to find that the money that we were paying in was somehow being re-appropriated out of convenience. This is not something that I think is ethical, and I think it hurts our community. We are very, very fortunate to have such a cutting-edge facility here in West Lynn and in Oregon City, and I, as a citizen and as a resident of this area, believe that it is essential that it remain in place as is fully funded and fully supported by our elected officials. So, I just wanted to take time away to offer my support, to make this statement. So, thank you very much for your time. Thank you very much for considering my views, and I look forward to working with WFTV in the future.
Okay. I think we've got, I've got, do you want to have a little bit of time for questions?
Sure.
Okay.
But I just wanted to close that in the process of this, this new operating model for WFTV, we have changed our budget around a little bit, and we're putting in place a, a new financial manager for studios. So, that would be a piece that is going to take care of all of those sorts of things. We actually have talked to a couple of different folks, and we think we have a couple of really good candidates that are CPAs that, that would be able to do the, the part-time role that we need to do to, to put in the kinds of financial controls and other kinds of things for a semi-governmental entity, a nonprofit. So, with that, I would, I would take whatever questions you have.
If I might, when you had the events that Commissioner just mentioned one, like the First City Festival, and your staff comes down and films, what, what kind of charges are levied, and how is that dealt with? I don't know if you can answer that.
Melody, you want to come up for a minute?
Sit by me because these microphones are going to have to work together. Sorry about that.
Stumbling in. How the community events we cover are kind of designated what we do. It's kind of based on a population of who's involved. Being the Downtown Association is a real big drive and all the new stuff going on down there. We try to complement and bring light to whatever's going on down there, and there is no charge for that.
I would ask that you send out the PowerPoint to all of us commissioners, since we didn't have that available tonight. That'd be great. Thank you.
Okay.
And I just wanted to clarify, because Dan was a little handicapped with what he got here. The, the statement of the meetings and so forth were actually proposed. We air all of the meetings that he had talked about in this presentation, but we don't currently cover. What we do do for the Oregon City Commission is we are an on-call backup for their current videographer, but just to clarify, those are proposed.
Okay. Go ahead. Any questions?
You talk about people who use production facilities, and from West Lynn, I don't know if you keep track with that way, but how many folks from West Lynn would produce a program in a year?
It varies from year to year, but I mean-
Have we given all the statistics to?
Right. We, we do have, we do have those statistics, and we have turned in those to Kirsten.
So, your staff has, has the answer to those questions.
Okay. And a follow-up. You mentioned, one of the folks on the, on the DVD mentioned that they were filming a church meetings every week. It sounds like they have a remote camera or something. Do you have?
No, what they do is, is they can do it one of two ways. Some of our church families actually check out a camera from the studio. They tape their event. They bring it back, and then they do their own editing, and then we air that film. Some of the other ones have their own onsite production abilities. They have cameras already set up in their facilities, and they make those recordings, and then they bring them down and do the editing, and then we, we run those on a weekly basis.
Good. Thank you.
Others? Go ahead.
How many cities are you currently providing services for now?
Six. Oregon City, West Lynn, Wilsonville, Damascus-
Milwaukee.
Milwaukee.
Unincorporated Clackamas County.
And, and we service all of unincorporated Clackamas County. So, anybody who lives outside of a city's jurisdiction but inside Clackamas County has the ability to come and use the facility.
Those, those people that are putting forward productions, you mentioned they come down and they edit. Who, I mean, who provides the training for their ability to edit their material on your system?
Anybody who's going to use an editing suite has to go through an editing class prior to that.
And you, you offer that class?
Yes.
Do you charge for it?
No.
We like to say they're prepaid.
I mean, that's, that's the whole point of, of the community access piece of, of the cable franchise fee, is that we provide that service and that ability for folks to be able to exercise their First Amendment rights.
So, I'm curious, how far along are you folks in, in considering the nonprofit model? That usually takes a little bit of time. How far?
It does take some time, and this whole process is kind of slimy, that particular piece of it. I still believe that we could get that done and be ready to, to make a switch over in, in fiscal 2012. So, I think we could get it done in fiscal 2011 and be ready to switch to a nonprofit status in, in FY 2012, which would be one July.
So, if, if that were to occur, and of course, the owner cities would need to agree to that, at least as far as the existing assets that the corporation has.
Correct.
And if those assets were then become part of the 501(c)(3), is that c3 status what you're pursuing?
Yes.
Okay. Then I'm, I'm sort of looking at that thinking about some maybe greater parity between not only a menu of services, but what the costs are and how they're allocated among the member subscribers.
Right. And we're very, you know, we're much farther along than we were. I mean, one of the very first things that I talked about with staff when I came onboard as Chair was the fact that we didn't really know what our costs were. We didn't have any kind of a loaded labor rate for the different folks and the different things that they were doing. And we're about 80% there now as far as knowing what all those costs are, and then we're going to look at each of those contracts and figure out, well, what are we, what are we giving to West Lynn? What are we giving to Oregon City? What are, what about Milwaukee and some of the other things, and reallocate those to, to make it more of a, of a fair kind of operation.
So, I guess at some point in that analysis, you may actually end up with a, a menu that says, here's dinner A, dinner B, dinner C. These are the various entrees that you offer as part of that package, and then cities that have greater need or more assets-
Right.
-who might want to buy that package can buy that one and so on.
Sure.
Okay. I don't want to run too far over our allotted time. The next section of the meeting is going to involve the council members having a discussion.
I just wanted to point out the letter that Oregon City Chamber put together.
Go ahead.
Sometimes we, we get so many letters as commissioners and counselors that, but it, it appears like Oregon City Commission, Oregon City Chamber House is in support of continuing with the company. Do you know how West Lynn Commission is feeling?
You mean the Chamber?
You mean the Chamber.
I don't know. I think Amber Holbeck, the Oregon City Chamber Executive is here.
Are you talking about West Lynn Chamber?
Yeah, we're talking about, asking about West Lynn Chamber.
Well, I am currently working with West Lynn, sorry, I was done. I'm currently working with several members of the West Lynn Chamber on a series of programs. So, at this point, I think they're very happy with what we're doing, and they produced 13 episodes of a Senior Resource Connection that is currently in editing. So, at this point, we have a very good relationship.
If I might, I'm the council liaison to the Chamber. Excuse me. And I, the Chamber Board at this point, I don't think is taking any view one way or the other about the Media Center.
Okay. Well, I don't want to cut off meaningful questioning, but if the deliberation could go on as, as planned on the agenda, I'm wondering, is, is there an opportunity for the councilors to be asking questions of the presenters during that time as well?
I think they could be made available if we want them.
Okay. All right.
I would agree.
Okay. All right. So, at this point, I'll open it up to all of you, having discussions about the things you've heard tonight and the information that's been provided to you. It sounds as though there's a, a financial question around providing services to residents of your areas, and there's also a question of the value of a local ability for people to utilize the cable access program that they already have here in their own area. So, I'm imagining that it's, it's just not a cut-and-dried formula, but one that you'll want to consider from several different angles. So, go ahead and-
If I might just for a moment, Oregon City, unfortunately, a couple of years ago, when West Lynn wanted to look at some of these things regarding the cable access, then the City Council and the, and the City Manager really putting off the discussion of this. And I guess I'm doing kind of a mea culpa on that issue, and certain things came into, came into focus, which really made us get together and look at some of the issues here. And perhaps if we'd become more involved in some of the things that West Lynn was, wanted to look at and so forth, some of these issues might not have, have arisen in the way they have. And I just wanted to, to indicate that, that particular issue.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Any other comments that people would like to make in order to frame up the discussion?
Well, I, I have a question of MCC. There was a question of, please, remote, of a producer wanting to produce off-site and borrowing equipment, which evidently is available from Willamette Falls, and your program would?
Yes. We have, we have portable equipment to check out to people as well as portable editing equipment. So, we have both porta-packs, cameras, tripods, bullet company. I would guess it's probably very similar to what West Lynn, Willamette Falls does. And we also have what we call Edit2Go machines, which are little Apple laptops that you can actually put on at your homes. And then we have a, we'll have in the new building, we'll have a new production studio with state-of-the-art equipment, very simple equipment to operate that one or two people can use in a control room to actually produce a show instead of having to have a whole crew, because we'll be using automated cameras instead of crude cameras like typical studios have.
And I think you talked briefly about the, the location of that central facility, and I, I think there was a question about, do you have any more local facilities? And I, I think when you initially made the presentation to West Lynn, you had talked about the possibility of an auxiliary, of ability to have equipment in auxiliary position or possibly as-
I think your staff was making a suggestion in, in the meeting that we were in with you, that we could have, they might find some space to have equipment available to be checked out that we would provide to public people who are qualified to use it.
Could I ask a-
I'm sorry. Who would check this equipment out?
Well, I, again, this was a suggestion by the city, and I think it was just a discussion point that we had, and we discussed the fact that that can't happen, and it does happen in some access centers, particularly once the people are trained, and if there's some setup for people to come and check that gear out, you could have that available for people, and, and they could check it out and bring it back, and we would continue to service it and be responsible for it. But we never got much further than just kind of a discussion about an idea of being able to do that.
Did you have a question before Mr. Jones asked this?
Yeah, a follow-up question. To be trained to do this, do you put them through the same type of class of editing classes?
I would guess so. I don't know their class schedule, but we have an orientation class that everybody first has to go, go through, and then we have various classes, whether it be field production class, where you would typically learn how to operate the cameras and, and field recorders. We have a field editing cla, a field editing class so you can learn how to use the Edit2Gos. We have classes in studio production. And then we have a lot of other classes in things like lighting, special techniques, things like that that people like to know. We bring, we bring people into as, we had a class as an example in television makeup. So, we brought up makeup artists, and they taught people how to, how to make people look pretty.
And those classes are all offered for free then?
Well, some classes are charges for, and some are, the orientation is free, but the commission has decided that there needs to be a nominal charge for classes, so we've started charging for some classes.
Okay. Mr. Jones?
Yeah. Let me frame the conversation a little bit more because we're talking about what color is the elephant, and we're not talking about the elephant. The reason that all of this really got here is because about three or four months ago, there were allegations of financial impropriety, all of which turned out to be untrue, okay? That, that although the management controls weren't adequate, in addition through that period, it's fair to say that all three Board members from West Lynn resigned from the CCAB, okay? And for various reasons, but having talked to, to some of them relatively unhappy with, with certainly their, their last piece of tenure at CCAB, which is, and my observation, okay? There is, I don't want to overstate, there is a level of distrust between Willamette Falls Media Center and the West Lynn City Staff- Falls Media Center and the Westland City Staff, and vice versa. Okay? For, since 2007, both staffs, in one way or another, have requested some managerial control with Willamette Falls Media Center. And to this day, that doesn't exist. It's still out there floating around, and I'm on the board of CCAB, by the way. We're still struggling to get a budget together for the year. We don't have that. I'm, as a member of the board, I'm not positive about how much money we have in the bank, what funds the media center has, okay? You know, so let's worry about all the wonderful things that can be done, but the issue is, and I totally agree that we've got a critical service that we have to provide, and it's a First Amendment service, but we've got issues that have been going on for four years. And to this point, no resolution, and we need to deal with it as a combined group.
And the driver now, excuse me, I'll just say this quickly, the driver now is that the, there is a financial decision that needs to be made, but it also is a situation where you're trying to decide whether to maintain a local cable access availability in your own area, whether or not that's feasible or not. And then also, if you did want to switch over, what it would look like in order to make a transition if you did that? Is that my understanding?
That's correct. I think the driver, the immediate driver is that if either or both cities want to dissolve the IGA, we really have to make that decision in the next couple of months, because I would assume we would go with MAC. MAC needs to get noticed. Per the IGA, we have to notify the CCAB, the media center, that we're going to dissolve the relationship before the end of the calendar year, to dissolve it at the end of the fiscal year, which is June 30th.
Okay, go ahead. Mayor Neely?
Well, as you know, your council put forward a, I don't know if it was an ordinance, because it involved both of us, but to go ahead and have our city managers take over the management of Cable Access, it was brought forward to Willamette Falls Cable Access. What it was brought to us, there are a couple issues of management. I mean, there's the budgetary management and so forth, but in terms of management of services, we felt our city managers wouldn't want to be in a position to manage those services. One thing that I brought out, we had a joint meeting subsequent to those, and one of the suggestions I had was to form an executive board. The city managers could select two people to be on it. It could be themselves, or it could be budgetary staff or personnel staff of the respective cities, that perhaps the mayors could appoint, the mayors, or depending on how the council of Westland operates, the mayor of council, or the council of Westland, and the mayor of Oregon City could appoint a council member. And then, that'd be four members, and then have the chair of the Cable Access Board be also a member of that. So you'd have this five-member executive branch that would deal with issues that are budgetary in nature, and that are personnel-based in nature, in terms of personnel management. I look at the advisory board as being, excuse me, I look at the current board as, to a large extent, and I think their interest in it is to deal with some of the services and some of the idea of those services. And I think that, I think that board could exist in one form or another, at least taking us into this period of time when Willamette Falls is considering, is trying to implement a different nonprofit model, and to see what that model might be. So that's a suggestion of an approach that we might entertain.
Mayor Kovach?
Well, besides the elephant that Councilor Jones talked about, we talked also about the amount of management time that this entity has taken from Westland staff and council over the years, and it's pretty substantial. And that is one of our concerns, is if, going forward, if we need to have continuing staff and council management of this entity, some of us think that that's quite a negative. We don't do that with other boards and commissions that we have. They should be able to manage themselves, and we haven't found that to be the case with this entity, and it's been a chronic problem. The other issue is cost. And how much does this cost? And are we getting value? And some folks have indicated that maybe there's a better value available, and we should go take a look at that. The last issue that we haven't talked about in the past very much is where is the location of the facility where our citizens can go and do their productions? And that is, the alternative is to leave it in, as it is now, in Oregon City, or to have it moved to the Beaverton? And that would be of some inconvenience to some of our citizens. But the number is, when you consider a population of 24,000, it's a pretty small number, and it is a matter of driving to another city. So that's kind of where our discussions have been.
Okay, let's see, all hands, one if it wants. Do the three of you want to decide what sequence you want to go in?
Go ahead.
Okay, I have a question about, it sounds like Milwaukee is going to be going with with MAC. Yes, excuse me, thank you. And if Westland decided to dissolve the IGA, that would put quite a substantial financial burden on the Willamette Falls. How would, in addition to handling a financial person, how would they address this financial burden? Do you speak to that?
Well, let me speak to the first part first, and that is, is that I don't know where the rumor that Milwaukee's leaving to MAC came from, but as far as we know, in our discussions with our folks in Milwaukee, while MAC continues to operate their franchise fees, there is not currently any movement forward at the Milwaukee City Council level to make that change. We heard from staff that they are going to have that discussion over the next couple of years, but as far as I know, there is no imminent move for Milwaukee to MAC. Is, would one of you guys disagree with that? Sure.
Can I hear, you have to be on the mic, please. Joanne Herickel, City of Milwaukee Community Services Director. The City of Milwaukee is considering being, becoming a member of MAC. We intend to consider it in the early September, actually at a city council meeting, just even asking to become a member, but we haven't taken action yet. But I anticipate it will happen over the next six months, probably not years. The decision would be made within that period of time.
Thanks, Julie. So the other question is, how would, how would, if Westland pulls out of the IGA, how would that affect Willamette Falls Media Center? And the, if there wasn't an agreement to move to a different financial model, like a nonprofit, I think, given the way the IGA reads, although we've already kind of neglected part of the legality of the IGA already, the way the IGA reads is the money gets split up, the assets get split up, and there wouldn't be much left to run Willamette Falls TV with. So all of the money that we've invested in the new building and all of the time and effort, not only of Willamette Falls Media Center staff, but thousands of volunteer hours and other things, would have really just been thrown away and gone to waste.
Thank you.
Okay, so it sounds like the strengths of the MAC are that they provide a level of legal negotiating and so forth with the cable companies and so forth. They sound like they're very heavily involved with that. And that their financial house is in order, as far as how they do the billing and all that kind of thing, sounds like that's well-established. It sounds like, in order to get that, though, we would have to give up the benefit that we've had locally, of our citizens, both cities, being able to have the services and the access to the equipment and the staff and the facility that's there in Reagan City. I'm wondering, I mean, in a way, it would seem like a shame to give up something, to tell our citizens that they'll now have, have to go to Beaverton, sorry, I'll come closer, go to Beaverton, just because we can't get our financial house in order? I'm not really sure. You know, I'm just wondering, is there some model here, like, for example, with the Tuauton Valley Cable TV, or the agreement that there is with Milwaukee, where the expertise could be coordinated for a satellite out here? Is that an idea that could work? Because I don't know if I can really stand the idea of telling people to go to Beaverton. I really just don't think that's real.
You'll get a lot of emails about that one.
When you say explore other models, are you thinking about something like, you said Tuauton Valley Cable Access? Is that what you said, that they, where you could share expertise? Could you say something more about?
The TBCT is a division of MAC, is a nonprofit that's also like a city department. See, one of the concerns here is for the First Amendment idea, the idea of free speech and so forth, would be that there would be as little government involvement in what is being said and done as possible. But this would be an independent kind of an organization. That would be the idea that we would like to see. But we also want it to be a business that is capable of managing its own affairs, financially, personnel-wise, and so forth. And I think that that is what has struggled here, you know? But it would be a shame to send our people all the way to Beaverton, just because we can't get that figured out.
Okay, thank you. Council President Carson.
I have questions for the two city managers, actually. One, I, at least in terms of the management of the franchise, clearly, we have not been able to get our franchise agreement renegotiated. And how much value is it to have that management of the franchise go to the MAC? And then I have a second, a follow-up question to that.
I can't speak for David, but what I can tell you is, there is nobody on the Westland City Staff with any experience whatsoever in administering, negotiating, or anything else, a cable franchise agreement.
So all the kinds of things that they're talking about, in terms of the MAC, in terms of the follow-up with customer service problems, or determining if there's fines, or any of those kinds of things that they were talking about, are things that just don't, we just don't have?
We don't have, no.
At all? Okay. All righty. And then, my second question is sort of for the flip side, in terms of the proposal that Mayor Neely mentioned, in terms of an interim process, in terms of the relationship with Willamette Falls TV, where there would be an executive management team made up of the city managers, or designee, and representatives from the two councils. What is the staffing impact of that proposal? Is that something that is doable, something that either of the cities have an interest in doing that approach? Because I think clearly that's a resource allocation that would be required from both cities.
I can try to take the first crack at that. We already have people from our, I have a couple of people on my staff that interact with the CCAB already, so I don't know that that would be a much larger burden than what we already have. I think the broader question, I'm not trying to, I'm trying to answer your question by proposing that, really, I think we have to look at the structure of how this can work. And there are a couple of different, I've always advocated, and anybody who's listened to me, say this over and over, forgive me, but I've always wanted to get to a place where the amount of management time we put into this kind of a service is less. I think we already have a CCAB that, I think in theory, would be better serving the communities by focusing more on the programming part, where we don't want government. And so I have always been an advocate, wishing I could get a subscription in the mail, review it, compare it to the other subscriptions that are out there, and decide, okay, this is the, this is the subscription that we want to go with, and send that amount of money and get the equivalent amount of service back. And then, that's a much more streamlined model for me as a manager and our staffing level, than probably what we currently have. And even more streamlined than some of the things we've talked about tonight.
Thank you, that's helpful.
If I may, I just tag along, I agree with David. I think from a city manager perspective, as he said, a subscription service, something like that, where you basically write a check, and our involvement is minimal at most at that point, is certainly the preferable way to go. You know, as the council knows, we reduced our budget this last year by six more positions. And so our capacity to take on anything new is, you know, it always depends upon what the priorities of the council are, but our capacity is stretched pretty thin at this point.
Okay, so I've got Mayor Neely, and Mayor Kovach, and Councilor Roth, I believe.
Just going to ask, I'm just trying to recall our budget. We, our budget does not, we're not budgeting the same amount to the provision of the services that we have in the past, is that correct?
We budgeted half of what we budgeted last year.
Okay.
I'd like to talk just maybe some more dialogue about the franchise negotiations. We have not had an agreement for two years.
That's correct, expired two years ago, but actually, the original agreement expired four or five years ago, and we renewed it in its same status for a couple of years, so we could match up with Oregon City's timeframe and try to jointly do negotiations, in an attempt to get a little bit more leverage than we currently had by being alone.
One of the big differences in the financial consideration sheet that we have is, for MAC, franchise is $67,000 for Willamette Falls, zero. What does that mean to the city? And maybe expand that to the staff involvement in the negotiations, which haven't been successful for two years.
Well, yeah, it's, again, we don't have expertise on our staff in terms of cable franchise operations, federal communications, federal communications commissions, regulations, or anything like that. So we have to hire legal help, to, legal assistance, to help us with the negotiations. And this time, fortunately, because our franchise is matched up in terms of timing with Oregon City, we jointly hired an attorney to give us some assistance with this. But this is all additional cost. And of course, then our staff time, which has been relatively minimal, actually, because Comcast has been so uninvolved and uninterested in negotiating a franchise agreement with us, that we really haven't gotten very far at this point with our franchise negotiations. So our involvement has been relatively not too burdensome because of that. I think the other issue there, in terms of franchise administration, is we have 10,000 to 15,000, I believe, cable subscribers in the City of Westland, and Oregon City probably has something similar to that. And the real concern as a city manager is, are we, as this community's negotiating team, getting the best agreement that we can? I, not having any expertise in this area, can't frankly say whether we are or not. I don't know. And so that's where it is at least somewhat helpful, to have individuals who have that experience and that background, to be able to negotiate these agreements. And David may have a position on that also.
Well, we rely pretty heavily on Barry Elsner and Ham... Well, we rely pretty heavily on Barry Elsner and Hammond to negotiate for, on our behalf, and, um, it's actually been similar to that in every city I've been a manager, regardless of the state. Um, you, you don't typically have that person or persons on your staff, and the city's under a hundred thousand to do that.
Commissioner Roth?
Excuse me, I'm gonna give, show my extreme ignorance here, but, um, Mr. Holliday talked about some kind of a throughput for Comcast Digital that runs through Willamette Falls, how would MAC handle that?
Very quickly, the, uh, what you're talking about is, is the hub that...
Can you get your mic on first?
Uh, is that, yeah, sorry. Uh, the hub you're talking about is where all of this intersects, I think, into Willamette Falls, if I'm correct. Um, one of the advantages of having Comcast serving all of us, is their giant fiber optic electronic system. Uh, so, uh, we don't expect that there would be issues moving, uh, signals from one point to another, uh, we'd have to certainly talk to Comcast about that, but, um, they move huge amounts of data and television and information all over their system on fiber, and they have tons of fiber out there. So, uh, one of the discussions we'd have, if the cities were interested in joining MAC, would be to have a discussion with Comcast, to figure out how that engineering would be done, and that would be one of the costs that we'd have to, uh, deal with and cover to make sure that happens. But a lot of it is electronic switching and routing that has to happen.
Okay, so, um, oops, here we go. So the, the issues that I was, um, listening to from my, um, objective position, because I know much less about this than all, you all do, but it sounds like the, um, management time, uh, is, has been significant to Westland, I heard them mention, mention that, and that's, um, that's, um, one of the things that they're taking into consideration. Um, the budget allocation, um, for services that are provided through Willamette Falls have been capped, and it sounds like Oregon City's had to, um, reduce by half what they've been budgeting in the past. Uh, the fiscal oversight is a question, and there have been several different models possibly, um, proposed that could be considered. Um, there, look, there's, um, if, if Willamette Falls cable access was to be maintained, you'd have to find a sustainable funding model, and one of the things that's been proposed is, is, uh, producing a non, becoming a nonprofit, and then finding, um, enough people to, um, subscribe that, that they could sustainably, consistently run their services in the, in the area. Um, the location of services is of value to people, it sounds like, because they're, they're very accessible to people who live in both cities, and the, um, ability for people to check out the equipment and get the, um, training that they need to use, to use that equipment, allows them to go out and do a lot of the, um, video, videotaping and, and editing themselves. And that may be a, a real value to the community. Um, there's the question of what to do with the ordinance that Westland passed, that will need, um, Oregon City's participation if it does go into effect. Um, it, there's a concern about minimizing, minimizing management time on the part of city staff, so, um, being able to, to utilize a service that's going to take the least amount of, of administrative time. And then, uh, there's also a value in focusing on programming, program services, so that would be something that you would be keeping in, in mind as you make these decisions. And then, um, in terms of the business side of things, do we have the best staff, uh, to do this? And, and as, um, Mr. Fraser pointed out, that, because of the size of your cities, it might not, you might not expect to have somebody on staff to be able to do that, but it sounds like you want to be able to have access to the people that would help you reduce your costs, or get the best value when you're negotiating your agreement.
One other thing.
Okay, go ahead.
There might be one other thing that we haven't discussed, and that's the bottom-line cost. I, I understand that with MAC, we would be negotiating, um, a fee and level of services, et cetera, and we may not have firm numbers, but we can get close. Um, from Willamette Falls, um, I know, I, I think that there's been a reduction in, in willingness to fund them at the levels we were before, so what happens, uh, going forward, if, if they wanted us to continue, uh, what funding level would they expect? The, the one that, that's been in effect for some time? Uh, a reduction? And what happens if Milwaukee, uh, does, uh, pull out of Willamette Falls? What happens to the level of services or expected contributions from the cities if they should pull out?
Is there someone that would like to try and answer the question?
I don't see anybody volunteering out there. I saw some shaking of the heads.
So it's a, kind of a, looking, trying to look into the future and imagine how you're going to manage this?
It's a, it's financial consideration. What, what is it going to cost us to do, uh, either option? And, and what are those numbers going to be going forward?
Okay.
Just a comment, we, I mean, the budget, the budget committee passed the, the Oregon City budget that had the contribution in representing, what, sixteen?
Sixteen percent of the, of, yeah.
Uh, we, uh, I, I think when those decisions are made, the, and the service provider, uh, you know, has to figure out if it's going to be able to adjust to that. I mean, we've understood that they, uh, that they have monies in reserve, I'm sure they had specific reasons for keeping those monies in reserve, but I don't think that what we've done would result in, uh, Willamette Falls collapsing financially at the, at, at a given point, and then, uh, they would have to look at the implications of the decision that we actually made.
Okay, well, I'm just processing here, okay? It's a process. So, we don't have staff in-house that deals with franchise, we, negotiations, we contract those out.
We have a, a person who coordinates the contract.
Right.
But they don't actually do the negotiating directly, and that's, that's true.
So, MAC would do that, and we would pay them twelve months out of the year, and this other person, we would pay one-time service. Is that correct?
Well, uh, I don't have a proposal in front of me from MAC, so I don't know what portion of that is going to be for the negotiation, I'm sure they could break that down into what the negotiations actually cost. But I don't have that proposal in front of me. We would be paying, spreading that out over the many months, but frankly, our negotiation costs right now are not pay all now, we get billed monthly by the law firm that we use.
Okay.
So, there's not a big difference probably there.
Well, I, I think what MAC said was the negoti, uh, fees are just included, it's not monthly or by the hour, it's just, you do it, it's part of the fee.
So it's built into the...
Those are the same fees that all the other jurisdictions...
And those would be the fees that we would expect that any other jurisdiction that joins MAC would pay, at least until the franchise renewal.
And is that the eighteen percent?
The eighteen percent is what you pay to MAC for what we consider the regulatory portion of what we do. The ten percent is what we have, uh, uh, the jurisdiction provide additionally for, to support the PEG access program. That generates about five-hundred-and-sixty-three thousand dollars a year, that ten percent? And that's what we, that's what we run TVCTV on, plus, some of MAC's operating budget, which is paid for by the eighteen percent, is also put into MAC, uh, into TVTV support. We probably, I would guess, we're probably somewhere around the seven-hundred-thousand-dollar range, if you put the combined total of the five-sixty-three, that the jurisdictions, their ten percent, and then the additional portion that MAC puts in there, is probably another a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, so we're probably about seven-hundred thousand dollars for our TVCTV budget alone.
Okay.
So, I, I always like to remind people that when you see the eighteen percent, that we are paying a, a portion of that that goes to support TVCTV, along with the five-hundred thousand that's generated by the ten percent fees. So your fees that we're talking about here, outside of additional programs that you might want to pay to have done, or other kinds of things, just like our jurisdictions do, the eighteen percent is what you would pay, uh, for the, the administrative portion, the ten percent is what you pay for the PEG portion, it's twenty-eight percent total of your franchise fee, it's for each jurisdiction we pay to MAC, ongoing, as long as you were a MAC member. And for that eighteen percent, we take care of everything related to your franchise. All the legal fees, all the administrative fees, negotiations, if there's a lawsuit, we maintain a fund balance and a contingency if we haven't been sued. But if we were sued, we're, our, the expectation of our jurisdictions is we have to defend them.
Right.
So we retain a contingency to deal with that as well.
And then, do you, does MAC give like a yearly report on activities, or something back to their jurisdictions?
We get, well, we have a commission that meets quarterly, which is made up of representative of each of our fourteen jurisdictions, most of them are folks just like you, you point your own person, and, uh, so we report to them quarterly, and then the jurisdictions receive information through our commissioners, back to them about what's going on at MAC. And then periodically, we send out information to them. Of course, our staff is working with many of them all the time, because they're getting their programs produced. Yes.
Okay.
Chair Carson?
Um, I just have a question in terms of this table, um, in terms of how it is that twenty-four percent is, comes out to be more money than twenty-eight percent?
Yeah, I was wondering about that too.
It's twenty-four percent of what, and twenty-eight percent of what?
Well, Jody's saying that twenty, on the Willamette Falls, it says twenty-four percent amounts to a hundred-and-ten for Westland, but under the MAC column, it's twenty-eight percent amounts to a hundred-and-five, why is the difference?
No, the difference is legal services and videography, which are included in the MAC proposal, in their position, what they provide, that is not provided as part of our franchise agreement or IGA with Willamette Falls, uh, that's all separate. So we have to pay legal services to negotiate franchise agreements, et cetera. We also pay our videographers to do all of our meetings. Uh, MAC provides a videographer for a certain number of meetings annually, and then anything beyond that, we would have to pay ourselves, so that's the difference.
I'm still not sure where the twenty-four percent, what's the twenty-four percent related to?
The, the, under, under the IGA, uh, that exists between Oregon City and Westland, each, each city provides, um, a, an amount of our franchise, uh, revenues, to, from Cape, from Comcast, to Willam, to Willamette Falls TV. Um, and that number, as you'll probably all recall from discussions in the budget, is thirty-two percent, and less, otherwise decided on by the two cities. The two cities this time decided, through our budget process, uh, to provide sixteen percent, plus, an additional eight percent, provide that certain criteria is met. And, uh, the criteria has not been, been decided upon yet, but that's why you see twenty-four percent there, because that's really what we may be obligated to provide if the criteria is met.
So the twenty-four percent is not related to the total at the bottom? It's, the twenty-four percent is related strictly to the, the two, the PEG funds, and in the case of MAC, it's the PEG and the franchise, um, and the franchise management? And so, the other two, um, fees are not, are just separate?
Correct, that twenty, that, that's correct. The twenty-four percent is twenty-four percent of the franchise fee revenues that each city gets from Comcast. And in the past, uh, it was always thirty-two percent, this time, as you know, it's been less.
Alright, thank you. That's good clarification, I miss.
Can either of you provide, um, just a, kind of an estimate of what we've spent in franchise legal fees?
Yeah, we, I think our recorder today, uh, estimated that to be about ten thousand dollars.
Okay, uh, collectively, or?
No, each of us.
Each, okay.
Nancy, did you have something?
It was, it was, I was trying to turn it on, maybe?
No.
I think David, where our finance director can answer that much better than I can.
I think we've only spent like two thousand dollars this year, sort of, the negotiation.
For Oregon City?
Correct. Yeah, on the one Westland paid.
We're not, we're not done yet. That's our estimate.
Okay. So, I have another, a few more questions. I would like to even back up further with the whole background of this. Um, I think that, um, this has been needed to look at, be looked at for several years now, and I think, for whatever reason, it has fallen through the cracks, um, by both cities, by both city managers and councillors, and, um, at this point, I think that this is a, a great opportunity, I'm, I'm glad Rocky, Commissioner Smith pushed this forward, and I'm sorry that he's missing this, um, great opportunity for us to sit and talk. But, um, I do think that I've heard from, I think, um, both city managers, maybe not, but I know from David I have, that, um, you guys had tried to work with the, um, board last year to negotiate an IGA or whatever. And my question is, if, the board is appointed by the mayors, why was not the mayors asked to intervene and resolve the issue before it got to this point?
I can, actually, our mayor and our city council appointed a member of the city council to act as their liaison as part of the, of, of the discussions with the CCAB on an MOU, and I believe Oregon City did the same thing.
And from the standpoint of, of the city, Oregon City, uh, Dan Holliday was appointed in the, in the latter days of Mariner's, and I agree with him.
Well, I'm talking about the year before.
Well, that, uh...
The year before is when they were having problems. Why was that not brought before the council and...
Oh, it was.
I'd like to answer that, because, okay.
I'm sorry, correct me, give me, I've spent hours on this subject, so forgive me if I'm a little impetuous. There in fact was an MOU, a memorandum of understanding, that tried to, um, create management controls with the CCAB, and that probably started, the discussions on that probably started in two thousand and nine.
Mm-hmm, yes.
And, that MOU went through, magic number nine, went through at least nine drafts, um, and was rejected by the CCAB, um, and in fact, um, and both, I mean, I would assume, I wasn't on council at that time, but I would assume our council saw it, I would assume the commission saw it, okay? And, um, we just died a grand and glorious death, because the CCAB said, you know, we're, the cities work for us, okay? And the city councils chose to let that happen.
But I think now that, I think, and I know, David, I know you want to speak, but I think now that this has been a good wake-up call for all of us to start paying attention to this. So, why can't we work through this process and, um, continue with the program as is, and look at MAC for twenty thirteen, fourteen, or something like this? I mean, it seems like it's been sabotaged, and we, we need to let it work the program, work the process.
So, um, David, did you want to have a chance to ask a question before I pass?
I don't have, I don't have a question, I just want, I don't think Commissioner Mom was on the council...
No.
During that year that you're referring to.
Right.
Mayor Neely was the commissioner then, rather than mayor, and he and I were, at least for the twelve months or so that I worked on that, uh, Mayor Neely was with me in most of those meetings, so we were, we were trying our best. I think really, I mean, to just avoid the finger point, I, I always say sometimes, good people get trapped in a bad system.
Oh, yeah.
And I just think that's what, the model here is not ideal for what everyone needs, but I do think everybody's trying. And I'll just, I, I indicated before, I think our, our secret city managers are more engaged in this issue than, uh, and the previous city manager, I'm not saying anything against him, but he, he was looking at other issues at the top of, of his priorities.
So this, this might not have been a priority, but it is now, it sounds like?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Mayor Kovesh?
Well, you asked a question of, uh, can we now, having a wake-up call, proceed with Willamette Falls, and, and that's what the decision has to be, that, that's where we are, and what each council has to do now is decide whether they want to continue, or if they want to go with an alternative. And the, the history is very interesting, and I think Mr. Fraser put it very well, that there were good people in, in a, a bad system.
It is very difficult, and we would have to change, I think, the, the whole thing to make this workable. And we have to decide whether we're going to do that.
Right.
The point, I mean, the point is, we both have to decide whether to do it, because if one decides to go a different direction, I think, and as, as the board chair of Cable Access pointed out, then that will dissolve everything, and, and Willamette Falls cable access would disappear. I mean, so, we, we either both try to work with the current provider that we have in terms of new IGA. If either one of us decide not to go the direction, that, that pretty well decides the situation.
Yeah, yeah.
Mayor, if I, if I might, regardless of which direction you, the two commissioners, or council and commission decide to go, I just want to, I think this is pretty obvious, but regardless of whether you decided to try to make the current arrangement work by changing the structure, which I think has actually even been proposed by some of the CCAB board members, or you go with a, a different provider, either way, either of those avenues, in my view, would require a fair measure of prudence and a wind-down, and a period of time in which you transition. I mean, you're going to need a transition period that's thoughtful and deliberate, and it's going to take some time. And that means whether you stay with the current provider or you go with a different one, both of those. So we're, we're in for a little more, a little more time on this before we're out of, out of the woods.
President Carson?
I would really agree with that. It doesn't really, I mean, even if we decided that we were not going to, we were all going to say no, we're not going with Willamette Falls TV, I mean, there's a period of wind-down, and then there's a whole discussion of, of, you know, assets and equipment that make up the TV station. I mean, there's a whole wind-down period that would be required. And clearly, even if the Willamette Falls TV is going to go to a 501(c)(3), it's the same process. I mean, they, they would have to become a 501(c)(3), and there'd be have to be some process to determine what happens with the assets.
Sure.
I mean, in any of the, any of these scenarios, there's that process of, okay, what do we do with the assets? I mean, the assets are, and how, how does that transition happen to a 501(c)(3) or for us going with a different provider? So, in the interim, I think we have to come up with some kind of a temporary interim agreement in terms of the financial oversight. I mean, that's my basic bottom line, is that I think that, that's clear to me. We have, we have a board that is committed to the cable access, but I think their role, I think Counselor Cummings said it, you know, is really, should be an advisory board to programming and, and to the good stuff that is being done. And the staff needs to be doing programming. We figure, need to figure out how we can ensure that there's good fiscal oversight until they become a 501(c)(3) or we go with somebody else.
Right.
So there's, there's sort of this interim piece that I think that we haven't discussed, that we still have to discuss, no matter which way we go.
Yeah.
Okay. Counselor Jones?
Before we can do that, we either have to rewrite the IGA in terms similar to what the MOU that was rejected states, or rewrite the IGA so that we create a new govern, new governance, or the Oregon City Commission has to pass a resolution similar, or in some form similar to the one that we passed, that gives management oversight, management oversight and fiscal oversight to some body other than the CCAB. Because right now, the CCAB, you can read it, you certainly can read it in the IGA, that the CCAB has managerial oversight and fiscal oversight for the entire operation. Until that's clarified, and that's going to take some legislative action, until that's clarified, really, things are just kind of status quo. They're where they are.
Mayor Neely?
I, I wouldn't argue with you whatsoever. I think when we talk about management oversight, if you're talking about fiduciary oversight, it wasn't really clear that, that what management, the two city managers being the managers, what that meant. And, and neither one of them would claim to have the ability to manage a cable access entity, I'm sure. So, I, I think the nature of the ordinance was such that it was not, it was not that clear to us what, what we're talking about, and we didn't, although we saw the ordinance a bit before, you know, you, you passed it, there really wasn't any discussion among us what the form of the ordinance would take. And so, we weren't, weren't going to pass an ordinance, so we weren't really, we weren't really involved in, in putting forth. And that may be where, where we ought to go, and to sit down and figure out the common language that would work.
Right. That would, would smother the exercise.
Yeah, exactly right.
You might be sort of mentally keeping track of next steps as you have this portion of the discussion. Go ahead.
Well, I, I think that's a good point. If we do go forward, we're going to, I, I think we've agreed that we need to rewrite the founding documents. And I, I think the structure of the entity is, and the board is talking about 513(c), that decision would be the owners, not the boards. And that's where we'd have to start, and basically, we'd be starting over. So we have to decide whether we're going to do that. And, and I think from your process question, the, the next step in the process is that each council has to make a decision, and if they can decide whether they want to make their decisions independently, or whether we want to have further discussions, but I think we need to decide what each city's going to do.
Okay. And is there, is there a timeframe around that?
None has been mentioned.
Sooner than later.
I'm sorry?
I said sooner than later.
Yeah.
Yes, and from West Lynn's standpoint, we do have a council meeting a week from now, and then we meet again in September. So it will be at least a month.
Okay. So what would you like to be doing in each council between now and the time when you might revisit this issue in a council meeting?
We have had meetings between the city managers, the mayors, and designate representatives of the respective councils. I would suggest that we have another one in the distant future to actually discuss this. I mean, we're not going to, we're not, we're not going to hammer much out here beyond what we've been talking about, I don't think.
That's a good point.
Why don't we perhaps discuss this among ourselves, what it is that we want to do, and then maybe the city manager, you and I, would talk about what it is we want to do jointly, and where each side is going to go.
So each internal, each, each group has some discussions, and then we come together?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because certainly, there's not a consensus here that I saw. We need to figure out if there's a direction.
It may be helpful. I, I believe staff's been capturing the information that's been shared tonight, and it may be that you need to gather more information from the sources that will be informing you about what best decision you'll end up making. So, having the chance to speak amongst yourselves and gather that information and review the, the questions and answers you've gotten this evening would be one of the next steps I'm hearing you talk about. Anything else?
Just like to thank Amy for helping us.
Yes.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Happy to be involved. Thanks.
I'd like, I'd like to thank the staff, the, the support staff that we've had here as well.
Yes.
And our presenters.
And the presenters. Thank you.
People in the audience that have come here, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Are we adjourned?
We're adjourned.
All right.
Adjourned.